Good afternoon. At this time, I'd like to call our City Council work session to order. We do have several items for discussion today. Our first one is Hampton Roads Planning District Commission presentation on housing opportunities. Mr. Manager?
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Councilman Bennett and myself had the privilege earlier this summer to view a presentation by the Hampton Roads Planning District staff on housing opportunities. This afternoon with us, we have Greg Gruetendorf, Shreena Bethia, and Nikki Johnson with us to give that presentation for you all. So with that said, I'll ask the HRPD staff come to the mic or to the podium, excuse me. Welcome.
All right. Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for inviting me here today to discuss the state of housing in Hampton Roads. As I'm sure many of you know, the last few years have been quite an interesting period for housing in general. Both during the pandemic, we saw a sharp economic contraction in most sectors of the economy, but housing actually remained a significant bright spot. But what we'll see today is that there has been a slowdown in housing market activity in the past year and a half since that boom. So let's look at that. If we look at the total number of home sales in the region, the total number of homes sold in the decade prior to the pandemic, we had about roughly 1,500, and this rose steadily to about 2,700 in the month prior to the pandemic. But then we see that sharp rise as housing demand boomed during COVID-19. So the total number of homes sold rose from 2,700 to nearly 3,500. But in the last year and a half, we've seen a significant steady decline. And so as of August 2023, the number of homes sold in the region was around 2,000. This is not just below the pre-pandemic levels, but it's actually the lowest rate since about 2015. What you'll also see here is that the yellow bars, which is the number of existing homes sold, this accounts for about 90% of total home sales in the region, they account for not only most of the growth during the pandemic, but also the subsequent decline over the last year and a half. And so the new construction, which is about 10%, we see it's been relatively steady over the last decade, and then even during COVID, we see a steady decline, but most of the changes have been from the new construction home sales. Now, if we look at a significant driver of demand for housing, we see that the average US 30-year fixed-rate mortgage has, was already declining significantly prior to the pandemic. In early 2000, it was about 8.6%, and then down to about 4% by 2019. So it was already at historic lows, but then during COVID, we saw an even further decline. In 2021, the US mortgage rate fell below 3%, to about 2.7%. But what also happened in 2021? Inflation, right? And that inflation forced the Fed to institute rate hikes. Interest rates rose, and so we see mortgage rates on the rise, and they have continued to steadily rise. And so as of last Thursday, the weekly US fixed-rate mortgage in the US was 7.6%. This is the highest rate since 2001. And so when we think about this, sales are down, mortgage rates are up, so we would expect to see some type of decline in prices. Yet we're seeing little evidence of a slowdown. So in the decade prior to the pandemic, we see median sales price of an existing home in the region was around 225,000, rose steadily over that decade to about 250,000 in the month prior to the pandemic. And then within that following three and a half years, we went from 250,000 to about 330,000. So there's been a significant increase over this period. And if we try to think about why prices have continued to remain elevated, if we look at the supply side of that price equation, what do we see? We see that the month's supply of inventories fell from historic highs after the housing market crash, it was about 11.4 months. And then we see in the decade prior to the pandemic, it took about three months to sell off, I'm sorry, in the month prior to the pandemic, it took about three months to sell off the entire inventory of existing homes for sale. This fell even further to 0.9 months, less than one month to sell off the entire inventory. Now, with the slowdown in demand and higher mortgage rates, we are seeing a slight bounce back, but we see as of August 2023, it's only about 1.5 months to sell off the entire existing inventory. So that's still 50% below pre-pandemic levels. And so what this is saying is housing supply remains significantly constrained. And one factor that's continuing to contribute to that constraint in housing inventories is new construction. And we see that here as the number of building permits issued for one unit, single-family homes. So prior to the Great Recession and the housing market crash, we hovered around 1,800 building permits issued per quarter, peaked at around 2,200, and then subsequent crash, we see that decline to about 517. Now, in the decade since and up to the pandemic, we did see a steady increase, but as of 2019, the number of building permits issued were still 50% below the prior peak seen in early 2000. And what happened during the pandemic? We saw shutdowns, we saw supply chain constraints push prices up for new construction, and also subsequent inflation, and all that did is put further pressure on new construction growth. So we see as of August 20, I'm sorry, as of Q3 2023, the number of building permits issued were 831. So what is the saying? New construction growth remains significantly constrained. Now, if we were to compare the number, the home value index, price growth of a typical home in the US versus Hampton Roads, we see from January 2014 to the month prior to the pandemic, home values rose about 40% in the US and about 16% in Hampton Roads. Now, Hampton Roads has always had considerably slower growth, and part of that does have to do with our prices are just more stable in the region relative to the national average. But what happened? After the pandemic, we see that nationally, home values have yet to reach their peak. They're still rising. So it's an additional 40 percentage point increase with, for the US, and an upwards of 30 percentage point increase since the month prior to the pandemic for Hampton Roads. Now, it is important to note, of course, that we also had inflation over the last year and a half. But even if we were to adjust for inflation, the 40% growth in home values for the US, inflation adjusted, it's about 19%. So it's not just inflation that are pushing these prices up, right? It's that constrained supply in the face of slower growth that is keeping prices elevated. Now, we do see a similar trend in rental prices in the region, and nationally, we see prior to the pandemic, from January 2014 to January 2020, home value, rental prices rose 20% in the US, 11.1% in Hampton Roads. Since then, in the US, it's a 37 percentage point increase, and in Hampton Roads, it's a 35 percentage point increase. And so overall, what are we seeing here? We know that home prices are remaining elevated despite this decline in demand. And so overall, we're seeing this decline in housing market activity, but mortgage rates are continuing to rise. And so if we look towards the future, a big question moving forward is how long the Fed intends to keep rates hikes elevated or interest rates elevated, to continue to push up mortgage rates, and how much that depresses demand in the future. Now, without sufficient inventories, we're still going to continue to see upward pressure on prices. Last thing I also want to note, though, is this current market conditions of low inventories, high prices, high mortgage rates, this is what perpetuates the housing affordability crisis that many are facing today. So just to look at that shortly, if we think about affordability, it's usually measured as in households' cost burden. And so that cost burden is households who are spending 30% or more of their income on housing. And if we use census data, we can see that approximately 33% of households, both in Hampton Roads and in Suffolk, are considered cost burden. This is slightly above the US average of 30%. Now, we also see significant disparities across ownership types. And so we see in Hampton Roads, in Suffolk, and nationwide, nearly 50% of all renter households are spending more than 30% of their income on housing, roughly 20% of all owner households. And that is with and without a mortgage. If we exclude owner households with a mortgage, theirs is about 25%, so still significantly high. It's something to consider moving forward. That's all I have. Any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Council members, do you have any questions from Ms. Johnson? Got a quiet group up here this evening. I did have one question, or at least an observation. It appears that, at least initially, most of the numbers that you've presented are strictly based on single-family dwellings, yes, not relevant to townhomes or condominiums and that sort of thing. And I was looking at the Hampton Roads breakdown of new development or new sales versus, yeah, that one right there, construction. And then obviously, that might be the case for Hampton Roads, but it can't be the case in Suffolk because we've had too much of an increase in population. So people can't just be selling existing homes, and we've got 15,000 more people here in that time period. So I was wondering if you had any breakdowns as it relates to Suffolk in that chart versus Hampton Roads?
I do believe I have the data on the breakdown, and I can dig into that to you. This does, I believe, cover all of new construction, and you are correct. Population growth in Suffolk has been far higher than the regional average. And so you shouldn't expect to see building permits or new construction home sales at the levels of the entire region. But I do believe that the trends are still the same over time, that despite the population growth, you might still see a similar trend of existing home sales declining with the rise in mortgage rates. But it's important to make sure that you focus on your city to see exactly where you stand individually.
Because we've had a significant amount of new construction, you know, somewhat individual homes, but the trend has been, you know, apartments, townhomes, condominiums, that sort of thing, mixed-use developments. And I'm sure that's probably going to continue. So anyhow, just wanted to make that observation. I don't think that, and they're still coming, to be honest with you. I don't know where everybody's coming from, but they're, they're still coming, and we're, we're still building. So when it's, if the purpose of this is kind of to ascertain where we are as far as housing options and where we are is projected for housing opportunities, if you will, that would be especially helpful for us as a city, and specifically to us as a city.
Yeah, especially when it comes to some of these indicators like building permits, which are tallied at the national level and then estimated for regions. It is available at the county level, but it's a little bit harder to obtain, especially over time. And so that's one of the main reasons I wasn't able to show that here today. But I can definitely dig into that and kind of see where Suffolk differs over long-term trends.
Thank you. Council, any questions or comments? If not, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Good evening, Mayor Doohan, City Manager Moore, other city council and city employees. I want to talk a little bit about some of the programs and services that, I think, is mine on here. Hold on just a second. Oops, there we go. Wanted to talk a little bit about some of the programs and services that City Manager Moore indicated that we're working on Hampton Roads Planning District Commission. Some of them on the regional basis, of course, and there are some that are a little bit more specific, that we're working in collaboration with the City of Suffolk. So with the Housing and Human Services Department, we are the administrator of home funds for our regional loan program. We serve as a regional representative of other various programs, committees, and advisory boards for human services, as well as we also have a regional Hampton Roads Disabilities Board that looks at disability issues in education. We are the staff support person for our Hampton Roads Housing Consortium, and we are the grant recipient of the Virginia Association of Planning District Commissions and Virginia Housing Housing Grant. So a little bit about our down payment and closing costs assistance program, similar to the program that you all probably know of that is administered through Self-Agree Development and Housing. We offer down payment and closing costs to first-time home buyers in the region. We do cover Chesapeake, Portsmouth directly, as well as Isle of Wight, and we also service non-entitlement jurisdictions on the peninsula. It's a forgivable grant that gives our first-time home buyer the down payment and closing cost funding that they would need to become a first-time home buyer. So as Nikki alluded, we see the dire stats that we see for first-time home buyers. So this program has been very important to move people with low and moderate income at about 80% of HUD's minimum income for this area into homeownership. So for a household of one, that's about 55,000. If you're looking at two, that would be about 63,000. So these are your workers, your workforce housing people that are in the area with families or with singles, with single individuals. We also staff support the Hampton Roads Housing Consortium. That is a separate nonprofit that is an affordable housing coalition. We meet at least quarterly to talk about regional issues and individual issues that are specific to Hampton Roads. We just recently had our award ceremony, actually last month, that we get together and look at the winners and the recipients of people that are doing the work of affordable housing in the area. We serve as the administrator of this group. The City of Suffolk is a member, as well as the Housing Authority here in Suffolk. I wanted to talk a little bit about our Virginia Housing, Virginia Association of Planning District Commissions grant. About two years ago, Virginia Housing looked at how they can increase homeownership across the state by working with planning district commissions across Virginia. So we received $3 million here at the Hampton Roads Planning District Commission to assist jurisdictions with projects and programs that were already in play, but because of COVID, because of the high cost of construction in the area, needed additional funding to kind of get those projects off. So we are working with the City of Suffolk with their Oak Terrace project. We are providing funding, gap funding for that project. That will be 120 units of rental for seniors, I believe, and we are working with Suffolk Redevelopment and Housing with a workforce housing project that we're going to try to build at least two projects with, in conjunction with Habitat, with the Housing Authority and the city for workforce housing in the area. So it's a one-time grant. We're hoping that this is renewed. We have until 2025 to expend those funds. Suffolk was one of the recipients of that. And what we did is we worked within our regional commission to see what projects. So we have projects on the south side in the peninsula as a part of that 3 million. And you know that 3 million doesn't go a long way. So these were projects that needed a little bit of funding to get them over and to get them to construction. So we have nine active projects within that program. I wanted to talk a little bit about the regional assessment, and I think that's what City Manager Moore wanted, just kind of make sure that you are aware of. The Hampton Roads Planning District, about a year ago, started having some communication with different groups and programs within the Hampton Roads region, and looking at authoring the first regional assessment. Hampton Roads has never actually looked at housing in terms of a regional approach of looking at where we are from an economic standpoint. So this regional housing assessment will be the first of its kind in the region. We have been working over the last year with meeting within the work group with the Hampton Roads Planning District Commission to see where the gaps are, what we need to look at, and how we can become a little bit more competitive when we're looking at economic development for the area. Everyone had always heard about the issues with Amazon and how Amazon chose where they were going to go in Northern Virginia. Housing was one of the number-one reasons that they did not want to locate to this area. So that would be one thing that we're looking at from a regional standpoint, is how do we fare? We're looking at gaps in services, what programs and services that we need that will make us more competitive. The beauty of this program is it does not give a blanket approach. It allows each jurisdiction to look at what they need to become competitive, and it does not ask for all of the jurisdictions to agree on one component or another, but it allows for each jurisdictions to look at what they need to become successful for housing in their individual locality. These are some of the pressing issues that we have looked at with that over the last year. at with that over the last year. We looked at rental, homeownership, special populations, homelessness, poverty, and existing homeowners. So what we're seeing, of course, and we have heard this from our senior services of southeast of Virginia, there's a baby boomer wave that we're going to see more and more baby boomers that are aging in place and need additional housing. We're also looking at millennial housing. How do we attract millennials? Most millennials want walkability. They want to be able to live, work, and play in the same area. So this study will kind of look at what all of those characteristics are. What we also notice with housing is that it kind of intersects with all other municipalities and specialties. When you're looking at housing approaches, you look at health, you're seeing transportation and culture issues, economic development and employment, and we're also looking at quality of life. That is becoming a term that we have seen more and more in terms of how do we provide housing and also ensure that we have a solid quality of life. Education and safety and well-being are some other components that we know pretty much intersects with housing at that point. So we're a small team in terms of the housing programs. It's me and Deidra Garrett. She's our housing specialist. She works more one-on-one with our individual down payment and closing cost assistance programs. I work more with the housing development projects and some of the other regional initiatives. And we're always looking at what we can do from a regional standpoint that affects the livability of each city. So we just wanted to kind of give you all a brief explanation of some of the programs and services that we're working on. And I'll take any questions that you have. I know that was a lot and a little bit of time.
Thank you, Ms. Pathia. Counsel, questions, comments? Councilman Williams?
Thank you. As it relates to the first-time homebuyer program, what's the criteria for an individual who wants or needs some help with the down payment? What's the procedure?
So for our program, the number one is that they are mortgage-ready, that they're able to get a mortgage within Virginia Housing or a qualified FHAVA USDA mortgage. It is for first-time homebuyers, which technically means you have not had any type of ownership within the last three years. You have to come within HUD's income requirement. So, for instance, if it's a single person, one person, they cannot make more than 55,000, 56,000. And generally, if they are mortgage-ready, we're able to put them in a home. But again, we talked about the affordability. So for our clients, they're competing with investors, they're competing with other people that are cash. But one thing we have been able to do was work with some magnificent real estate agents on both sides that understand the program, and we're able to kind of move them into homeownership. Once we get an application in with our program, we process within three to five business days, and they're out on the street looking for properties in there. So I'm not quite sure what Suffolk's redevelopment housing actually runs it for Suffolk, but they, we're under the same guidelines, and it's the same home program that they have through their Housing Authority here locally.
I know that the Suffolk Redevelopment Housing thought in the past, they offered some type of course?
Yes, sir.
Is that standard?
Yes, so the Virginia Housing first-time homebuyer's class is offered online, as well as there are individuals throughout the region that offers that particular course. So I believe that the Housing Authority offers that in person. During COVID, that became online because of everyone being at home and remote. But any first-time homebuyer, we always recommend that they take that class even before they reach out to a mortgage person, so they will know the ins and outs. So that class is free. They can go to virginyhousing.com and just take that in the privacy of their own home. It's a great tool. I'm a landlord, as well as a homeowner, but just going back through that as a refresher course for everyone, just to know what the programs and services are out there is very beneficial.
One other question?
Yes, sir.
Are those classes limited? I mean, is there a certain number of people can qualify within a certain timeframe?
Well, the online, anyone can go, but because of size, there are some organizations throughout the state that has larger, you know, facilities to do so. Some other organizations that do them want them smaller. They want 10 to 15, so they can have a more intimate, you know, experience. But there's no limit to how many can do that. In fact, they're always looking for new people to come and do it. It's a six-to-eight-hour class, but it goes over the role of the lender, the real estate agent, as well as what happens at closing. And it's a very intense amount for budgeting, spending plans, and credit. And if a buyer is not creditworthy, we work with HUD-approved credit housing agencies locally to get them ready so they can come back and purchase. Yeah.
Councilman Rector.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for that great presentation. As far as the closing cost assistance and the, you know, that other program that you, I actually had a client that was able to take advantage of that. And if this client stays in the home that they purchased for five years, they will get an additional, almost $20,000 worth of equity credited to them.
Absolutely.
And that's in addition to the marketplace appreciation that the, you know, that it is going to naturally occur. So that is a great program, and I applaud you all for doing it. I know that my client became aware of it, not only through me, but also through the mortgage broker that she was, this person was dealing with. So, and then also, you know, I think all these presentations sort of, everywhere that I go, I mean, all the Virginia Municipal League meeting, the 757 RVA convergence meeting, the Hampton Roads Chamber of Commerce legislative update, everybody is talking about the need for affordable housing, workforce housing, whatever you want to call it. And we're not the only region, we're not the only city that is struggling with it by far. I mean, trust me, it's bordering on a national crisis. There are plenty of jobs for people, but they just, they can't afford a place to live.
Absolutely. And Greg always alludes to the fact that we're seeing a lack of housing in all segments, not just low income, but we're seeing it across. And I can't tell you, when we first started the program, and this has been going on since 1996 and some, I get more calls from parents of children that have gone to college, did what they were supposed to do, got their four-year degree, got their master's degree, and they're in their basement. Or they're still at home, and the parents are saying, how can we get our adult children out? But they're unable to find housing. So they've done everything they were supposed to. They've checked the box. So what we see is the face of affordable housing and the face of workforce housing is changing from what we see, that even seniors that are wanting to downsize are unable to find something comparable. So we see that across the board in all incomes, in all income sectors.
Yeah, I mean, just this morning, I was at the Workforce Development Council, and clearly 80% of the conversation from everybody at the table centered around their need for workforce, workforce housing. So we applaud you for helping us attack the problem, and it's going to take a lot of work on everybody's part, you know, to figure out a workable solution. But thank you for being part of it.
I think this is the first opportunity, and we met back in September 29th with other members with the chamber, with the Hampton Roads Military Facilities Group, the Alliance, different other groups, because what we've been doing in housing has been siloed. You know, you do housing in silo, and you don't look at those other sectors. So we're hoping to continue that, those conversations with other disciplines to make sure we can get across the ground.
And then thank you for emphasizing the fact that the need for this type of housing, it's not just Section 8 housing. It's for policemen, it's for firefighters, it's for teachers, it's for, you know, all kinds of people that are very vital to the success of any city. So thank you for that, sort of expanding that definition.
Councilman Bennett?
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation, and I'm very happy that you all were able to come to Suffolk and give a presentation that you gave to the HPR at the meeting. And I think it was good to let the public know in Suffolk, that watches the council meeting, what some of these opportunities are available, that might not realize that you are out there trying to do work with the ones that are actually trying to get the first-time being homeowners, and the process that you helped them go through in order to meet those goals. So I know this, they have to have a good credit, and I think that's one thing, as one of my fellow councilmembers said, I know the Housing Authority has been working for some years with tenants, getting them to come in that has bad credit, and work with them to get them qualified through HUD to be able to be first-time homeowners. And I think that's a great tool that can be used, because so many people don't take that opportunity to correct their mistakes that they have made in the past, that they can come back now and be a homeowner.
Absolutely.
But the bottom line is the income level, and that's the big key right there, I think, that keeps a lot of people from being able to go out, as you were stating, but some still at home, because the income level, they can't afford to go out and purchase a home. I'm listening, some places now that rent is just as high as a mortgage payment.
Oh, absolutely, yes.
So we're talking affordable, but then we get to the point say, what is affordable? What can you afford? So that's what sort of put it where in that people say, well, I want to do it, but can't do it.
Exactly.
And I think you're giving them the opportunity to try and move forward and do be a first-time owner. And I can't thank you all enough for your presentation.
And I think what we have to look at is that we have to have more than just a hammer in the toolbox. We have to have a lot of other programs and services. There is a project called Housing Choice Voucher to Homeownership, where housing authorities have utilized their vouchers for Section 8 rental into homeownership. So there are a lot of different services and programs, but we just have to be able to market them, to get the word out. Most housing authorities, most nonprofits and government agencies like us, we don't have a marketing, a marketing budget, where you see payday lenders and unscrupulous people, they're on the news, they're sending you letters. So word of mouth has been how we've been, in fact, impactful in getting the word out to you all, to give to your constituents would be helpful as well.
Well, you just mentioned something that, first time I heard that, that they could use Section 8 as a part of their down payment. That's the first time I heard that.
Yes, so each housing authority has the ability to set aside a certain amount of vouchers for homeownership. So they can set aside a few, that if they have someone that is doing the things that you all had mentioned, they have fixed their credit, their income is up, because we have a lot of clients that are at the top of what their vouchers are paying, then the PHAs can determine that they can utilize their Housing Choice voucher for homeownership instead of rental.
How do they go about doing that?
You would have to contact your housing authority to see if that program is available, and then they can write that into their program design if they have the vouchers that are available. So it's case by case. They will have to go back to the Housing Authority to see if that's available.
Okay, thank you very much.
Counsel, any other questions or comments? Ms. Pathia, thank you very much for your presentation. Personally, I'm very interested in the, and we've kind of beat it up a lot, affordable housing, workforce housing. As a city, we need to, we need to address some guidelines as far as what type of incentives or options that we could possibly provide to builders who, and developers who kind of specialize in affordable housing, because it is a specialty. There's a knack to submitting the forms and qualifying and establishing the allowable rents. So any help that we can get to our folks regarding affordable housing, and what maybe some of the other localities are doing to encourage that, I mean, personally, I would greatly appreciate, and I think everybody up on this does would as well.
And we're hoping the assessment will give us that toolbox, that we can come back and be able to say, these are the best practices, these are the things, based on your population, based on the type of incomes that you all are looking at, would be, you know, most beneficial. So stay tuned. We're hoping to get that approved tomorrow in our commission meeting, and we'll have more information to go back to our localities. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, I think that, does that conclude our presentation? I was just checking to make sure that we didn't have another presenter. I've done that before. I saw you sitting at the audience, okay, we're done. No, wait, we've got one more to go. So once again, thank you very much for coming, and hopefully, you know, we'll be able to garner some information from you folks to help us do what we need to do, you know, to accommodate the growth that we have, and also accommodate the citizens that we currently have that are looking for that affordable housing. We got some good things on our horizon as far as job creation, but just like somebody mentioned, you have all the jobs in the world, but if you don't have a place for them to live, then we're going to have a hard time attracting those individuals. So thank you very much. Very much appreciate it. Okay, our next item for discussion, referencing warehouse standards. Mr. Manager?
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. At your September 20th meeting, City Council held a public hearing to amend, to hear revisions, to amend Chapter 31 of Unified Development Ordinance of the Code of City of Suffolk, Article 7, Supplemental Use Regulations, to add Section 31, 726, Warehouse Houses and Warehousing. Subsequent to your public hearing, City Council moved to defer to consideration of the proposed amendments until November 15th, and requested staff to meet with interested parties and consider potential revisions to the amendments. This afternoon, the Director of Planning and Community Development, Kevin Wine, will review where we are today. It'd be a status revision or a status report on some of the proposed amendments that we have considered prior to your consideration in November. So with that, Kevin, if you could go over some of the items.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Manager, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. You'll recall, back at your September 20th meeting, we had a discussion about proposal supported by the Planning Commission as it related to establishing some currently nonexistent standard supplemental use regulations for warehouses throughout the city. Currently, we don't have any supplemental use regulations built into our Unified Development Ordinance as it relates to these uses. There's been a proliferation of warehouse development very rapidly, really over the last five years within the City of Suffolk. And we've noted that there's some real potential impacts that we feel that we're in a place to address currently. These uses are limited to by right development in both the M1, that's our light industrial district, and M2, that's our heavier industrial zoning district. So part of the conversation that I think may have been lost back, back in September, is kind of what a warehouse is. We define it in a variety of different ways in the Unified Development Ordinance now, but ultimately, it's a building used for indoor storage of goods and materials. The goods and materials are delivered, and the goods and materials leave. They can come in a variety of shapes and sizes, obviously some much larger than others, some smaller and more quickly move goods out of them. But in general, that is what a warehouse is. We also have a few other definitions as well. I'm not going to belabor the point and read those, but we do define what these uses are within our UDO as it currently stands. So I noted that warehouse uses may have the potential to impact adjacent and surrounding properties, and we've kind of heard that. And we've observed that as a city over the last several months, several years, primarily as it relates to noise, traffic, and truck parking. I believe we're all experiencing this in the city to some degree, and that's really what these regulations have been that are proposed, kind of aimed to mitigate a little bit. And this is much, really comes down to land compatibility more than anything else. We're looking at some adjacent uses to existing by right industrial, these own land, that we would like to get ahead of some potential problems we could encounter down the road as it relates to land compatibility. So the purpose, to mitigate these potential adverse impacts on newly established warehouses as it relates to public property, residential uses, institutional uses, or recreational uses, to include the public roadway network. And that's trimmed, and a little later in this presentation, I'll get into some of the tweaks that we've made in our conversations with stakeholders who, on both sides of this issue, who see it as very important moving forward. So just a reminder, as an example site, this is where we have Florence Bowser Elementary School, just off of Nansman Parkway, very close to the driver community, and some residential, low-density residential along that corridor. But it is a sea of low-density residential along that corridor, but it is a sea of RLM zoning in, I'm sorry, it's an island of RLM zoning in an island of M1 zoning. So today, by right on this property, a developer could develop it for a variety of warehouse uses in direct adjacency to Florence Bowser Elementary School. And currently, we don't have any potential safeguards as it relates to those potential impacts that I noted in place to enhance development and increase its quality. Additionally, we have a real-life example, we're getting into some land use compatibility issues as it relates to the Bridgeway Commerce Park. This is just off the very northern point of College Drive where the roundabout is, you do have some adjacent office there, but immediately to the south, you have some higher-density residential zoning. And the parking area in this example, right up to the property line, that is shared with that RU zoning to its south. Shared with these pictures with you last meeting, but this is Progress Drive as a part of the Willroy Industrial Park. This is the Golden State Foods, are a part of the Golden State Foods warehouse there, some of the trucks waiting to get on site. It's a small site, they really didn't look at accommodation of trucks on that site as a part of the development process, and as such, there's the proliferation of trucks on our city right-of-way, obviously making it difficult for us to provide adequate services and/or providing unnecessary conflicts as it relates to safe transportation. Here's another example, a more recent example, and this is in the Northgate Commerce Park where the Amazon facility in the city is located. Here we have My Way, a newly constructed road, and to the right, you have the newly constructed Tractor Supply Company. This is a cul-de-sac, and you can see, there's a lot of trucks there on a cul-de-sac, once again, just waiting to get into the Amazon facility right down the road. These are the things that we were thinking about and witnessing and observing throughout the city of Suffolk, that we wanted to try to get a handle on a little bit from a regulatory standpoint, obviously within legal means and really thinking about it from a reasonable and rational level as well. So just to remind you, these are the kind of the subcategories that we have designed these regulations around, setbacks being a key, and I'm going to kind of break that down a little later in this presentation. But setbacks kind of take aim at visibility and really the noise issue more than anything, and there are a couple of different layers there, and I'll go through those a little bit further in detail. Sound barrier requirements, once again, with trucks come noise, with loading dock doors comes noise, with forklifts comes noise, idling of trucks, noise, we recognize that. And there are a couple of options there as it relates to noise. Truck cab and truck cab park, and I shared the examples of why we feel that is important, really important to get off the public roadways or other parking lots throughout the city and onto the site that they are queuing up to go to. A routing plan as it relates to how trucks are going to get to and from the site, that may not be as key as it relates to our principal arterials throughout the city, the roadways that are designed to handle a high volume of traffic, but we certainly want to know on some of these smaller roads that may not be equipped to handle truck traffic, how the developer plans to get trucks to and from the site safely. Landscape buffers, coming back to visibility, we have successfully implemented that on a variety of uses throughout the city. We want to make sure that these are screened as much as they can be, particularly when they are adjacent to incompatible land uses. And lastly, we recognize that there are a lot of developed industrial parks within the city of Suffolk already that are fully built out, or maybe they have a few out parcels that have not been developed yet. We understand that, and in some cases, there may be an opportunity for them to seek a waiver specifically to the setback requirements that we're proposing as a part of this ordinance. So, as Al noted in the intro here, you all asked that we take a look at some of the proposed regulations presented to you back in September and modify where appropriate. And a big part of that conversation was engaging with stakeholders who have an interest in this proposal, and that includes groups like Citizens Voice, that includes groups like the Port of Virginia, that includes developers who develop this product, not just in Suffolk, but throughout Virginia and the country. We've had some really productive discussions on this issue, and from our standpoint currently, this is designed to mitigate land use incompatibility at this time, not necessarily creating locational criteria for warehouses. I think that's a much larger discussion, that is 100% on our radar today. We've had that discussion throughout the community as we pursue our 2045 comprehensive plan development, and I think that's a question that we're going to get some guidance on as a part of the comprehensive plan development. However, when it comes to land use compatibility right now, from a regulatory perspective, we have to pursue things that we believe are reasonable, really from a property rights standpoint as well, because if we restrict the development of a property too much, that gets into a potential legal issue for the city of Suffolk, as it would be considered a regulatory taking, and that is not what we're trying to pursue. So, based on these conversations, I'm going to outline some of the modifications we've made to this language from your last consideration of it. So, one of the key ones is looking at the applicability, where would these regulations apply? It comes down to adjacency, what are you adjacent to, immediately adjacent to? Previously, it was public property, residential uses, agricultural uses, conservation uses, rec uses, and the public roadway network. We have since modified that to remove conservation uses and agricultural uses from being applicable. We also realized that there were some areas of this language that required some additional clarification, specifically as it related to when a barrier, a noise barrier is required versus a berm, and where it must be placed. So, we've clarified this language a little bit, and we clearly denote now that related to noise mitigation, you have two options. You can either put in a sound barrier with that 30-foot setback, or you can do an enhanced buffer with a berm at 60 feet, and that's the difference there. Sound barrier at eight feet tall, 30 feet, and I'll actually touch that in a diagram here in a moment, or you can do, give us some additional setback, and at that point, leverage a berm that's vegetated at 60 feet. We've created a language to encourage the preservation of existing vegetation to comply with this requirement as well. We don't want to, we don't want folks removing vegetation to plant vegetation that meets this code, we'd like them to preserve what they have in place, we recognize that, and they'll have the ability to leverage that existing vegetation to meet our buffer requirements and screening requirements. We've also removed the timeframes with specified maximum permitted decibel levels. The reason we did this is because that exists in the UDO currently, we did not see a need for redundancy. Those noise performance standards with industrial zones versus residential districts versus commercial zones come into play regardless, so we have taken that out as it exists in Section 31 608 of the UDO today. Another point of clarification was there was some uncertainty if the sound barriers would be required along the public right-of-way. They would not, and we outlined that in this modified language that you have before you this evening. Additionally, we looked at the requirement as it relates to yard trucks, yard mules, forklifts. We previously required that they utilize alternative means of safety pulsing, particularly to eliminate the high-pitched backup noise that we've noticed is really problematic when it's adjacent to residential uses. Instead, we're now recommending that they utilize that, so they have the ability to institute those. However, that would not impact the hours between 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM, which the decibel transfer between one property to another would still be in play, and we could still enforce from a zoning perspective with the city. So, we recommend that they use them all the time, it would be in their best interest from a neighborly standpoint to utilize them all the time, because that would not necessarily limit their ability to operate between those hours listed here. So trucks, we had some conversations with groups at the table here, and one of their primary concerns was the dimensional standards that we had labeled for trucks. Previously, that was 14 feet by 75 feet. In our conversations, the industrial average there is 12 feet by 60 feet, we understand that, and we have modified that accordingly in this refined proposal. Additionally, we looked at the truck routing plan, and not sure this is clearly reflected in what you have before you, but will certainly reflect it prior to your public hearing, or prior to your consideration, rather, on November 15th, but we looked at where the truck route should take you, and I touched on this a little earlier, but we want, we really want to understand how the trucks are going to get to the site from the roads that have the capacity to get the trucks to near you. So, we're much more concerned with our collector roads and our minor arterials, not necessarily our principal arterials. So we elaborated there a little bit and refined that provision to provide a truck route as a part of your site plan that shows how trucks are going to get to and from the site to the nearest principal arterial. This would be your Route 17s, this would be 58, this would be 460. That's, once you get the trucks there, we kind of know where they're going to go. Additionally, there was some confusion as it related to onsite signage, and really what the developer should provide at their expense. We've refined this to be a little bit more clear and focus on the onsite signage. We want to make sure that as a part of a development of a site, the trucks know clearly where they are to go once they leave the site. The city can handle the no-truck zones outside of that, but on the site, we want it clear that, and they'll provide us that plan at the time of development plan review. So, we talked setbacks, and it's important to understand what, when these come into play, when they come into play and what it means. This doesn't necessarily directly impact a building setback, the building setback will exist and remain unchanged. What we're talking about is certain exterior improvements that are associated with the development, primarily your parking areas, your stacking areas, your loading areas, and moving those a little further from the property line. But moving those a little further from the property line only when you're immediately adjacent to residential, institutional, rec uses, and the roadway network. This is very similar to our SCOD, that's our Special Corridor Overlay District, that we have along most of our arterials throughout the city. It's proven effective to push back some of those, primarily parking improvements, a little further from the roadway, really for aesthetic purposes, and allows kind of an enhanced screening buffer as well. So I noted, and I just want to make sure we're clear on this as it relates to the setback options, this isn't necessarily a stacking of a footage requirement as it relates to setback, these are the options. And both of them will come with a required setback, or a required 20 feet of these setbacks would consist of a vegetated buffer with minimum specs, as outlined in the ordinance. But, once again, you have an option for a 30-foot buffer. With that 30-foot buffer, you would be required to install an eight-foot-tall noise barrier, a noise wall. We've seen this successfully implemented throughout the city on a variety of projects, specifically as it relates to noise mitigation. If that option is not viable for you, or you'd like to pursue an additional option, we understand, and that would come with a 60-foot setback at that point, and an eight-foot-tall vegetated berm. So those are the two options there. Like I said, whether you pick the 30-foot option or the 60-foot option, that would contain a 20-foot vegetated buffer. There was a lot of discussion at the last meeting as it related to setbacks, and what we, what we could anticipate as it relates to setbacks, and I'm going to present some examples with you, you're familiar with some of these, this is the notorious Florence Bowser example. But what's depicted here, you have three different colors and lines that border the property. We have a 60-foot buffer outlined in green, we have a 100-foot buffer outlined in blue, and that more turquoise aqua color, that represents a 500-foot buffer. We're proposing the 60-foot at a maximum right now, with the ability to leverage a 30-foot, should one install a noise barrier, which really effective at mitigating some noise. We're throwing out the 100-foot option because I believe that was discussed in the setting, if that is something we wanted to visit. But I think what's clear here is, once we get to that 500-foot buffer, the amount of usable property shrinks to a point that it really represents a regulatory taking at that point, and that is not the intent here, or the purpose of these supplemental use regulations. Here we have another example, this is going back to the GE site up in North Suffolk, just off of College Drive. This aerial doesn't show the warehouse that has been constructed there since, but once again, you have the 60-foot buffer, the 100-foot buffer, and then you can see what the result of a 500-foot buffer would be on this site. And lastly, this is the Suffolk Industrial Park, just off of Carolina Road, south of downtown on Obecie Industrial Boulevard. This was an EDA-developed property ultimately, and once again, you see the results of the buffers that we have up there. Once again, that 60-foot buffer in green, the 100-foot buffer in blue, and then that aqua color representing a 500-foot buffer. I believe there are 10 developed sites there now, there are a few additional sites that could be developed, but if applied with a 500-foot buffer, you get to, really only three of those parcels would be usable. So once again, we're trying to approach this from a reasonable fashion, a legal fashion, and that's where we've developed those setbacks that we have proposed to you all. So lastly, you may recall, this was presented to the Planning Commission at their meeting on August 15th, and by vote of seven to zero, they have recommended approval of this ordinance text amendment, but we have tweaked portions of that section as requested by you all for your consideration, and right now, that is scheduled for your November 15th meeting for discussion. So that concludes the presentation I have for you this evening on this subject, I can stand by for any questions or concerns.
Thank you.
May I?
Thank you, Mr. Wine.
If I could add on to Kevin's presentation, of course, in front of you, you see a redlined version of what has been changed from what you had seen earlier. Again, we still look to get some comments from you all on what you see in working with this as we move towards November 15th, but the key was, is that we not show up on November 15th and have more questions, we'd like to work through this amendment to the code, and we look forward to having more discussions. And we look forward to having more discussions on it with you.
Questions or comments, Councilman Fawcett?
Yeah, Kevin, if you would, I want to make reference back to the North Gate Industrial Park, particularly in the cul-de-sac, where I think you kind of touched on that and said those trucks were waiting to go into a facility. I don't think that's a true and accurate statement. I think they parked those trucks there around the clock. They're using it for a parking area is what they're using it for. You may see a truck move in or out occasionally, but if that's a city cul-de-sac, is it?
That is, that is a city publicly maintained right-of-way.
Okay. So we have an option there to fix that, as we have in some other areas, by just going in there and putting a no-parking signs on there, no parking trucks in that cul-de-sac. And that'll really fix that problem as far as it goes to North Gate. But to think that, you know, I don't want this ordinance to be the one fix-all for that. I want someone to go in there, as you have in other areas, put signage up that says "no truck parking." That can be done and those trucks are going to leave because then you have an enforcement piece right there you can use. Right now, there's nothing, the city street, we feel like they can park there. There's nothing indicating they can't park there. So I get what you're trying to do here, I'm just adding to the fact that I see those trucks every day. I look at them and I see the same type of trucks, the same colored body trucks, and I don't see them moving. You might see an occasional truck going in and out of there. But there is nobody sitting in those trucks. There's not, all those trucks are not moving around the clock and they're not waiting to go over to Amazon to hook up. So I think we need to take a look at that, that cul-de-sac and see if there's another way to help fix that, to help alleviate that problem because it doesn't help the business there, that it's tractor supply. I mean, those trucks aren't just sitting in the cul-de-sac, they're on the roadway as well. They're not hooked to any trailer, they're just sitting there as a cab, a tractor itself. So we might want to look at how we can fix that. I'm a little concerned with the truck routing, and I know you're going to have it where, you know, the developers are going to have to come up with a truck route, indicate that. I'm a little perplexed with some of it. In some cases, that truck routing might work, but right now, we've been fighting for over a year and a half, this on Shoulders Hill Road about trucks. And we finally have one end of that that's no through trucks. And we have the signage that's like billboard signs, so you can't miss it, placed on 17 Shoulders Hill Road and down to Pewsville. We're about to embark on seeing a major warehouse complex going into Shoulders Hill Road, along with maybe three other outlined warehouses in the very near future. And my concern now is, with looking at this, is those truck routes are going to be kind of important to that new warehouse going in there because I can assure you that they're going to want to come off 17 and come up Shoulders Hill Road to get to that warehouse, which is not going to be very far off of, probably within a few hundred feet of Bob White Lane where the traffic lights at. So we got an issue there. You know, my no-truck route or no-through trucks is going out the window as soon as those warehouses go in play because those trucks coming through there. And we're not enforcing it now, so we're probably not going to be able to enforce it even when they start doing it again, even though we still do have Amazon trucks coming through there. So I'm not disagreeing with the truck routing, I'm just disagreeing with the fact that I don't know how effective it's going to be when we get these other warehouses in play because North Gate is very busy. You've got a new warehouse coming online there that has over 200 doors to it. That's going to be monumental. That's a lot of truck traffic going into North Gate. That should be opening any day now, they're just about complete. So there's a lot of movement, but we build industrial parks to do specifically just what we're asking them to do, is to have a warehouse complex in there, such as Amazon. There's a moving supply facility in there, a moving house facility in there. So, you know, we've got some growing pains here with this ordinance because these trucks are definitely going to be an issue as we move forward. I just wanted to point out that little basic piece that you had just talked about. And I'm really concerned about the truck routing. I'm going to, I'm going to have to just wait and see how that kind of plays out because I still think we're going to have some issues there. But anyway, I appreciate the update. We'll take another look at it and see if we need to scratch it up some more. But I appreciate the improvement that you have made to this point, to change some of the things. Thank you.
Councilmember Butler-Barlow.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Kevin. How you doing? Thanks for the update. I have a number of questions. Can you go back to your very first slide, identifying the different types of warehouses? So we have, you said within the UDO, there's these different designations of warehouse, distribution, freight storage, kind of these different levels. Does that, how does that play into the ordinance? Is there any differentiation between the actual use of these different, I mean, they're all called warehouses, but they all have kind of different uses. I know I've seen this, you know, last mile fulfillment, which is a much smaller scale thing, and then the, you know, the Amazon-like ones that where it's a huge amount of truck traffic in and out. So is there, is there any way that the ordinance, and I haven't looked through all of your changes, but specifically directs, addresses these different types of facilities, even they're all, they're kind of lumped together as warehouses?
At this point, no, we don't differentiate between, you know, what they're storing or how they're storing it or what their kind of business model is, whether it's a last mile or an import facility. We do recognize now that they do operate a little differently. However, right now, as we define it, a warehouse is a warehouse and they would apply to all.
Right, okay. I just, I for one would like to see, you know, I think the, you know, the traffic, the noise, I mean, all of the different things that these things are generating are going to be different for those different types of facilities. So just wondering if we need a kind of a graded, you know, rating system, because some of them are going to be much less impactful and some much more. So I don't, it seems like it's not maybe 100% fair to hold them all to the same type of requirements. So I just would like to see more information about that. You talked a lot about the health impacts with noise, and I know I've asked a question about air quality, and I know that the state administers that sort of thing and we don't, but if it is potentially a health impact to our citizens, we need to figure out a way to get the state to weigh in on that, just, that's just a comment. I'm glad that you made the change with the, you know, the agriculture and conservation because I think those are in some ways industrial uses as well, not the conservation maybe. The other thing I wanted to ask a question about is, so we're going to have setback, noise barrier, vegetated buffers, and then we're also going to have this truck route, these requirements that are within the code that are going to be required in the plan when the people come in to, you know, suggest this kind of a facility. What's our way of enforcing those things after the fact? You know, it's great to say, yeah, you got to have this row of trees, but if, you know, they all die, then what's, what's our, what's the city's recourse there?
So that's a wonderful question. As it relates to the setbacks and the buffers, that's something we do every day in our department through site plan review. You have to demonstrate as a part of your construction plan that you're going to meet these minimum requirements. So we'll ensure that before they get a building permit, that they're constructing to that approved construction plan. So it's quite easy to enforce. Should vegetation die within that buffer, we hold a bond and they have to replace it, things like that. Or should they start chopping trees down? We then have a mechanism to enforce that through zoning enforcement action. And that's one of the reasons we thought it was so important to bring the truck route into, which has been successful through the conditional use permit process, into the site plan itself. Because once we have that approved site plan, that allows us to legally enforce it through a zoning enforcement mechanism. So instead of like now having conversations with Amazon saying, hey, your trucks are all throughout the city, how can we get them to use certain routes? We can point to the plan that they submitted at the time of approval and saying, your trucks are not following this, thus you're subject to a zoning violation.
Okay, all right. And that, that kind of, in addition to that, a lot of these are speculative properties and we don't know who the end user is going to be, but those standards are going to apply no matter who is occupying the facility?
That is correct.
That goes with the property, okay. Another, just one more comment and I'll let somebody else talk, but there's been a suggestion about, you know, a lot of the times, these trucks are parked or idling or waiting and some of it is that the, there's not stacking or parking. Some of it is that the drivers have to take a break, have to rest, have to sleep because they've got to maintain their logbooks and take their required breaks, and there's really no place for them to go. So is there any thought about, maybe not making a requirement, but a suggestion to provide some sort of amenities for the drivers that are coming in and out of these facilities so that, you know, they don't have to go 10 miles down the road to find a rest stop or a truck stop to get food and a shower or whatever? Is that, is there any way to have that as part of this?
In a lot of ways, we're seeing the market come to us a little bit with, with the development and warehousing in the city of Suffolk. We recently approved a truck terminal off of Holland Road near Center Point there. There is the potential to amplify these supplemental use regulations a little bit. I think it's a little harder to apply, once again, looking at the varying sizes and shapes and operations of these facilities to apply them kind of on a catch-all basis.
Right.
But generally, users know their needs for the most part. And when we're approached with someone who knows that they're kind of maxed out on the site that they've chosen for their building, we've seen them pursue adjacent sites for overflow parking and things like that. But additional amenities, that's not something we've thought about at this point, but I thank you for bringing that up and that's something we can dig into a little bit further.
Okay, thank you very much.
If I may add, I'm not sure that those types of amenities are things that city council has the authority to.
Right, right.
Under the things that you're allowed to look at for zoning regulations, I think that that's going to stray outside of that.
Is, can we, if we, can we not require it but suggest it?
We can always suggest things, but in terms of making it a requirement, I'm not sure that we would have the authority to do that.
I think it would be, yeah, not as a requirement, but as part of the discussion that, you know, want to take care of all the folks that are part of that workforce, so. All right, thank you, appreciate it.
Councilman Johnson?
Back on that, that was one of my main concerns. How do other areas control where these trucks park and where they go? And what kind of influence can we make for the warehouse industry as far as controlling the trucks coming? I mean, I live in the middle of it, you know that. They keep controlling the trucks coming in and where to put them and what they're going to do. And there's been a lot of problems lately, I don't 58. And I just wondered, this I applaud, I mean, it's passed due, we should have had it before all this started, but I'm not completely convinced it's exactly right yet, but it's pretty close. But I'm with what Councilwoman Barlow was saying, the trucks are out of control. I mean, and it's really gotten to be a problem. I know in the north in the, on the city, they're parking in our right-of-ways. Part of it's us and we've got, that has nothing to do with this warehouse thing, but we've got to do a better job controlling where these trucks are going. I've had them in my parking lot all night. I've had them, you know, 58 particularly, it's a real issue. We can't require it, but we certainly can not allow what's going on now. It seems the industry or by putting forth guidelines, we can't control it in some fashion or at least recommend that, you know, if you're going to have 500 trucks coming in, you got to have a place for them to be. I don't, I think that's an ongoing issue though, as far as, I'm not, I don't think we've addressed it, I guess that's my point. So there's some way we can touch on it with, while we're talking about this, maybe it's something we can look at down the road or, I don't know. It is, it is getting to be a bigger and bigger problem from my perspective. So I just think it's something we need, certainly other areas, what do they do, you know, in other markets?
And just, I want to just clarify my answer to Councilmember Butler-Barlow's question. I'm specifically talking about having facilities for drivers to take showers or things like that. We can control where trucks park. The city code already provides that when we sign something for no parking, you can't park there, or you can set it for certain hours for parking. So the city currently has the authority to designate places where trucks can't park.
But we all know that that's true and yet, and Center Point, how many years have they been parking on the side of the road? I mean, it's been a long time coming. Hopefully, we can fix some of that with this, but my point being, we just need to be very much aware. So, but I do applaud you on what you've come up with so far, and I think that you've done a lot to address concerns and it's going to be a living document. We'll need to make changes as we move forward, I'm sure. But I thank you for the job you've done.
Council, any other questions or comments? If not, I've just got a couple of comments and a couple of questions. Comment-wise, as I said, I was elated when you put together this initial supplement addressing warehouses. It was to say, I don't know, very much needed would probably be an understatement. You did incorporate most of the changes that were discussed on the dice. I appreciate the manager procedurally as to how we're addressing this, so we have the opportunity to look at it once. You made some changes, we're looking at it again. I was a little concerned, you know, the buffer, when you look at the eight-foot-tall buffer, the eight-foot-tall berm, excuse me, it also, we've added it, it requires and supplemented with three staggered rows of evergreen shrubs, which are a minimum of six feet when they go in. So now we've got, if my math is right, we're going up 14 feet, an eight-foot buffer and at least a six-foot-tall evergreen at its planting, which I think is great. The, I'm looking at the setbacks, I mean, I can probably live with the 60. Could be a little bit further back. Everything else, we addressed the noise, some of the other issues that may come up in regards to the parking. You know, we've got a parking space for every 10 warehouse doors, so there will be some parking space onsite at each facility. I do have a question concerning, so I think you've done an excellent job addressing what we had, the concerns to begin with, and then amending it based on the comments that you got. I want to talk about self-storage for a minute. Is self-storage contained within this same category? Or do we have separate ordinances for self-storage?
So we have a separate definition for what's called a mini-warehouse, which is a self-storage facility. As currently constructed, these would not apply to those. There are several, I'm sorry, separate supplemental use regulations that we have already in place for mini-warehouse self-service storage facilities. So as such, the intent is not to apply these to those types of facilities.
It says there's a separate set of guidelines for self-storage?
Yes, sir.
Okay, because that's come up before where, you know, we talked about self-storage and our self-storage is categorized at warehouses and, you know, I've done a little bit of research, the legal definition of a self-storage isn't anything like warehouse, you know, because it involves storing and removing personal property, individual containers. So I just wanted to make sure that we weren't going to restrict some of that type of activity as well because I look back at ones that were recently approved, two of them in the Center Brook area, one up down the street from DMV, and then the one that we recently approved behind Bronco. So I just wanted to ensure that self-storage wasn't going to have to adhere to these type of guidelines.
Yeah, that's a great point. And going back to the applicability section of the supplemental use standards tied to warehouses and warehousing, considering that mini-warehouse has its own separate definition in our UDO, it would not apply.
Could we possibly change that category from mini-warehouse to self-storage because they are separate? There is a definition, legal definitions of self-storage. I haven't seen a definition, and maybe the city attorney committee, I haven't seen a legal definition of mini-warehouse. It's either warehouses or not warehouses. It's either warehouses or not warehouse, but self-storage does have a legal definition.
We have a legal definition because the UDO sets up a definition for it.
Okay.
Just like, just like a restaurant that has music is called a nightclub, a self-storage, a self-storage facility is called a mini-warehouse in the city of Suffolk.
Okay, but the guidelines, the definition is basically the same. We're just going to different, call it something different?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, that's all I got for you. Counsel, last chance. Counselors, questions, comments? Whoever holds your peace. All right, thank you very much, Kevin. Appreciate it. That concludes our work session. We do have a need for a closed meeting this evening. Madam Clerk, will you please present the motion for consideration?
Pursuant to Virginia Code Sections 2.2-371188 and A1, consultation with legal counsel employed by a public body regarding specific legal advice requiring the legal advice of such counsel, and the discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for appointment, and the assignment, appointments, and performance of specific public officers or appointees of the city. Specifically, the appointments are shown on the attached list for vacancies or term expirations for the community policy and management team, the Early Childhood Development Commission, the Fine Arts Commission, the Human Services Advisory Board, the Library Advisory Board, the Local Board of Building Code Appeals, the Sister Cities Commission, the Suffolk redevelopment housing authority, the Tidewater Youth Services Commission, and the Western Tidewater Regional Jail Authority.
Council motion has been presented for consideration. Councilman Fawcett?
Motion for approval.
And a motion for approval from Councilman Fawcett. Councilman Rector? Second. Second from Councilman Rector. Is there any discussion in the motion? Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
This meeting stands adjourned, and we will reconvene at 6:00 PM.